O eterno lord god, from alone cometh wisdom and understanding. We beseech thee to direct aright the hearts and minds of those who are about to take counsel together on matters pertaining to the common life of this borough of Christchurch, that in all their deliberations and decisions they may faithfully discharge the duties of their office and ever promote the health, safety and well-being of those whom they seek to serve for the honour and glory of thy holy name. Amen. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us; and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power and the glory forever and ever. Amen.
Good evening ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this evening's meeting of the council. I would like to remind everyone present that this meeting will be filmed by the council and broadcast live on the internet, and will be capable of repeated viewing. In relation to matters for discussion on this evening's agenda, I would like to advise members that the following legal advice, Agenda Item 13, Local Government Reorganisation in Bournemouth, Dorset and Paul, is to be considered under exempt item session, and will therefore be dealt at the end of the meeting following the exclusion of the public and press. In addition, I would like to inform council that I have been advised that the proposer and seconder of the notice of motion of Agenda Item 10 on the agenda have withdrawn this motion. I would like to refer to councillor Jones now to make a short brief statement.
Thank you Mr Mayor, and thank you for allowing me to make this brief statement. My seconder and I are not withdrawing this motion because we regret in any way tabling it, or because we resile from its sentiments, or because of any alleged error of fact, or any disingenuous statement in the motion or the accompanying memorandum. Quite simply, we have been advised, and we have accepted that advice in good faith, that the council already has the powers to take the action set out in part C. There is of course also the point that tonight's agenda is rather long, and while we reserve the right to reintroduce the motion if necessary at a later date, there are more pressing and more significant items of business to be discussed this evening. Thank you Mr Mayor, and I thank my seconder for seconding the motion in the first place, and for her agreement to withdraw it. Thank you. Mr Mayor, I'd like the reasons for withdrawal to be limited please.
Thank you councillor Jones. I'd like to remind the public that if they wish to leave during the meeting, they're only welcome to do so, if they don't wish to stay right to the end of the meeting. Thank you. We now take item two on the agenda, apologies for absence.
Thank you Mr Mayor, we've had an apology from councillor Nottage.
Thank you. Item three, declarations of interest by members. Oh, hang on.
Sorry, Mr Mayor, can I give an apology for councillor Wendy Grace please?
Noted. Councillor Watts?
Thank you Mr Mayor. Just to ask the question, I understand at the last meeting that my microphone wasn't working, so unfortunately those lovely people out there in YouTube land couldn't hear me. Can I have confirmation that my microphone is working this time please? Thank you.
We are urging... Mrs Fitz?
Thank you Mr Mayor. This was for item three, which you did actually introduce, on declarations of interest. Thank you very much. I just wanted to declare an interest on the resources committee minutes of the 14th of March, where you'll see in the minutes that at that meeting I did leave, so if there is any discussion on it, I will leave the room, but otherwise I don't think it's a problem. I thought I want to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Fitz. We now take item four on the agenda, the minutes to confirm as a correct record the minutes of the meeting held on the 20th of February 2018, and the extraordinary meeting held on the 13th of March 2018.
Thank you Mr Mayor, I'm happy to propose the acceptance of the minutes of the meeting held on the 20th of February 2018, and the extraordinary meeting held on the 13th of March 2018. Thank you.
Councillor Jameson?
Thank you Mr Mayor, I'm happy to second as said. Thank you.
Those in favour?
It's unanimous Mr Mayor.
Unanimous. Thank you. We now take item five on the agenda, announcements. I'll stand for this. Since we last met, the mayors and I have conducted 38 visits to members of the public and organisations. We've had, I'll only mention three because I think they're important. We held a charity dinner at the Avonmouth, no, I beg your pardon, the Harbour Hotel in March, and it was absolutely well attended, and we raised £3,300 that evening. Last week we had a golf day, and there were 26 teams, over 100 people on the golf course, and we raised nearly £2,000 for my charities on that occasion. A very pleasurable one, more than most, where we paid a visit to a lovely lady to celebrate her 101st birthday party. That was at Avonview Nursing Home. If somebody got the time to actually go and visit some of these care homes, and enjoy the company of elderly people, they appreciate it. That's all I have to say about that, my charity. But, I would like to propose that we send a card or a letter to the Duchess, the Duke and Duchess of Cambridge on the birth of their new child. I believe I have a second for that.
I'll be happy to second that proposal, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Flag. Can I have a show of hands? That is definitely unanimous. Thank you members.
Thank you Mr Mayor. Just to advise members really that both myself and the deputy leader continue to attend the LGR joint committee meetings and task and finish groups. Thank you Mr Mayor.
David?
Thank you Mr Mayor for the opportunity, but I don't have any notes this evening.
Thank you. Item six, the deputy mayor elect 2018/19. I have to announce that the following of the outcome of the recent ballot for deputy mayor 2018-2019, council are asked to note that councillor Peter Hall has a deputy elect for 2018-2019.
If I could just say a few words, Mr Mayor. I'd like to thank the members also. I think it's very fitting that someone that was born and bred in Christchurch is probably going to be the last deputy mayor of the ancient borough, and I thank all the members for their support.
Thank you.
I sincerely hope not councillor. Item seven, questions by members of the public. I have to advise you that there are two questions that have been received from members of the public, and I would like to invite the questioners to step forward and ask their questions first of all. Mrs Leslie Farretty?
Thank you. Good evening. My question is, I ask the council leader why it has taken five months instead of the required 20 days to reply to my freedom of information request for council-held documentation on the permissive pathway through the Renaissance housing development. Apart from the 106 agreement on access hours and the planning application, the council will not supply any other information on the grounds of legal privilege, and I ask why is there such secrecy? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Flag?
Thank you Mr Mayor. Thank you Mrs Farretty for your question. The council apologises for the delay in dealing with your request for information. I have been informed by the council's information team and legal services that your request was dealt with under the Environmental Information Regulations 2004. This is a different regime to the Freedom of Information Act 2000. However, I have had sight of the request and the response provided to you. To answer your question, when a request seeks to ascertain all correspondence, and especially correspondence relating to legal agreements, deeds or prosecutions for example, or any other matter which relates to legal issues, it is the right that the council applies the correct exemption. Such exemptions are provided by the law, and in this particular instance, I can see that information was partially released and partially exempted. I am told you had the right to complain to the information commissioner concerning the exempted part of the request. There is no secrecy concerning this issue, it is just simply the council relying upon lawful exemptions. Legal professional privilege is nothing new, and I'd hope that the council can rely on the advice given by its professional officers, safe in the comfort that such advice will at all times have to be privileged. Given the live status of this matter, and Mr Fennings' question illustrates concerning enforcement, it is right that this advice is indeed exempted, but please rest assured, knowing that there is simply no secrecy, just that the request goes towards issues which may need further legal consideration. Hence, the application of the exemption.
Thank you Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor. Mrs Farretty, do you wish to supplement your question? Next question comes from Mr Peter Fennig.
Thank you Mr Mayor and councillors. There is a permissive footpath through the Renaissance housing development next to Druitt Gardens, which has an associated S106 agreement, which states that the path is to be opened during daylight hours. It is not, and after two years of poor responses from the council, I made a written complaint which sat with the council for eight months. Will the leader please investigate why this council is not upholding the conditions of the 106 agreement, and why the council has spent two and a half years in obfuscation and delay in still refusing to uphold the access hours as per the 106 agreement?
Councillor Flag?
Thank you Mr Mayor. Thank you Mr Fennig. Again, I can only apologise for the delay in replying to your complaint. This isn't the standard expected of the council, and I extend my personal apology to you. I have seen the complaint response, and I am also told that the S106 agreement as drafted simply is not enforceable. Dawn and dusk are both vague terms, and there is some degree of doubt as to the enforceability of that clause. It is a matter for the council as to whether it wishes to enforce an obligation. However, in terms of planning, I'm told there was no planning reason raised which warranted securing a public right of way through the site. And neither does the council have any statutory powers or mechanism to force an owner to convert permissive rights into public rights. Moreover, if it wasn't for the S106 introducing the permissive right through the site, there wouldn't have been no planning reason to object to the scheme. However, the S106 did introduce permissive rights, albeit through a non-enforceable ineffectual clause. To this end, there was an added benefit to the community over and above that expected. Moving forwards, the officers have taken the pragmatic approach that daylight hours should be 9am to 5pm, and that this seems a reasonable arrangement to overcome the drafting ambiguities in the agreement. There is nothing left to investigate as the officers have identified the ambiguity in the clause and have secured a workable solution. Thank you Mr Fennig. Thank you Mr Mayor.
Thank you David.
May I thank the leader for his reply? I happen to be a chartered geologist, and done a lot of astronomy, and I can assure you, you can calculate dusk and dawn to the minute by mathematics, and if you look up the US Naval Observatory in the US, Washington DC, you will find the information there. I have difficulty in accepting what the leader said in good faith, and I shall obviously have to pursue it further, but I thought a 106 agreement freely signed between the owner and the council, and signed under seal, would have been legally enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you Mr Fennig.
Thank you Mr Mayor. Mr Fennig, Mrs Farretty, would you accept an invitation from myself to attend the civic offices, to sit and discuss with the officers the situation? I would be more than happy to facilitate that meeting. Would you be happy to do that? Thank you very much. Thank you Mr Mayor.
Petitions by members of the public, I understand there are none. Now take item nine on the agenda, questions by members of the council. I have to advise members that there are three questions that have been received from members of the council on this occasion. Questions have been received from councillor Jones and councillor Abbott. I'd like to call questions from councillor Davy Jones to the leader of the council.
Thank you Mr Mayor. To ask the leader, is he aware of the financial property transactions relating to hotels and to retail parks lately undertaken by the Bournemouth Borough Council?
Councillor Flag?
Thank you Mr Mayor. Yes, just to say that yes, indeed I am aware. Thank you.
Have we a supplementary councillor Jones?
Thank you Mr Mayor, yes indeed. Is the leader therefore also aware of whether this cost, if it is ill judged, of how much of it will fall onto the residents of this borough, should the future Dorset scheme actually go ahead, and for how long does he expect Christchurch to be treated as a cash cow for Greater Bournemouth?
Thank you councillor.
Thank you Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, I'm not privy to that information, and I will reply to councillor Jones after the meeting. Thank you.
Your next question councillor Jones?
Thank you Mr Mayor. To ask the leader, is he satisfied with the apologies he has received from the minister and his staff over the failure to include him in the distribution of a letter to all Dorset council leaders?
Councillor Flag?
Thank you Mr Mayor. Just to say that yes, I am satisfied with the apology that I received. I did forward a copy of the email to all members of the council, and I can confirm that I did receive a personal telephone call from Rishi Sunak MP, giving me his personal apologies for the oversight. Thank you Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Flag.
Thank you Mr Mayor. Supplementary arising from the information given by the leader, has he taken appropriate steps to ensure that knowledge of the contents of any such letter which becomes public domain is given to him even if he does seem mysteriously to have dropped off the distribution list?
Could I ask councillor Jones to repeat that question please? I didn't quite understand where he was coming from. Thank you.
Thank you Mr Mayor. Can I ask the leader, has he taken steps to ensure that this unfortunate incident does not recur, and if knowledge reaches the council of another circular letter to leaders that he hasn't received, has he taken the appropriate steps to make sure that these unfortunate accidents do not happen again? I'd be happy with a one word answer.
Yes.
I now have a request from councillor Janet Abbott to the chairman of scrutiny in the policy overview committee.
Thank you Mr Mayor. I'd just like to ask, what representations have been made by scrutiny committee to the Bournemouth-Paulle Council Joint Committee, and what actual changes have resulted from these representations?
Councillor Flag? Or councillor Jameson?
Thank you Mr Mayor. I'd like to thank the councillor for her question, and for clarity, I'll just take the opportunity to outline to members the reasons for the question as I understand it. And I bring members' attention to minute 313 of the minutes of the meeting held on Wednesday 21st of February 2018 at 6pm, which refers to the Bournemouth Christchurch and Paulle Joint Committee, structure of future special meetings of the scrutiny and policy overview committee, which is for ease of members on page 45 of this agenda. So that's rather a long title, it's on page 45 of the agenda. And this refers in particular to the borough of Paulle's response to the next Bournemouth and Christchurch-Paulle Joint Committee meeting, where they respond to the agenda items of the upcoming meetings, rather than looking retrospectively only at the minutes, which is what we have been doing the other two. Members felt this could be useful, but felt there was a need to scrutinise also what has been done. So the scrutiny committee will look back at the minutes and look forward at the agenda, so that they could make their comments to the joint committee. The chairman proposed that future meetings should scrutinise the agenda for the forthcoming meetings of the Bournemouth Christchurch and Paulle Joint Committee, which would allow for the committee comments on upcoming issues to be brought to the BCP Joint Committee, rather than on issues that have already been discussed. Members at that meeting raised concerns over the joint committee's use of task and finish groups and their lack of transparency. And the deputy leader of the council explained that task and finish groups were often used due to the amount of work needed to be done in such a short space of time, which sets the scene for the question that was asked. the scene for the question to be asked, that was asked. So that's the context and our representations are as follows. On the 9th of Jan, there was nothing put forward as this predated the agreement to comment. On the 21st of Feb, we made recommendation that the task and finish group meeting be open for councillors of all three authorities to attend and observe. On the 15th of March, nothing was put forward. On the 12th of April, recommendation that the risk matrix be a standing item on the future joint committee meeting agendas, that the constitution for the new authority allows for as much public participation and openness of meetings as possible, and the policy of Christchurch Borough Council remains harmonisation on day one. And with regard to part two of the question, I'm not aware that any of the outcomes of our representations, as I understand they would be passed for consideration to the most relevant task and finish committee. However, I will ask our officers to identify which task and finish committees these representations have gone to and what the outcomes were, if you're satisfied with that as a response. The task and finish groups are going on more or less daily and those representations will end up in one of those and I will get the feedback for you if you're content. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
councillor Abbott, do you wish a supplementary question?
yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Would you say that this has been somewhat evident of the way Christchurch could be treated should we become part of the Greater Bournemouth Council and also how can we correct this?
councillor Jameson.
Mr Mayor, I'm grateful for the supplementary. I have no comment on it.
item 10, the notice of motion, that has been withdrawn. We now move to item 11, the committee minutes. councillor flag.
thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm happy to propose that we receive the minutes of the committee meetings for the last cycle marked up 9, 8 to I within the council agenda this evening. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
councillor Jameson.
Mr Mayor, I'm happy to second as set out, thank you.
now take a vote on the minutes. Those in favour? To the contrary? That's unanimous. Yeah, we now move to 11, 1. Councillor Durham Wilkes.
thank you, Mr Mayor. The Community Committee last week met to discuss the local government review and the draft recommendations that came from that meeting. The local government review had a task and finish group and that group met three times and thoroughly discussed the implications of what we wanted the public in general in Christchurch to consider. We know it does get very confusing because there is so much talked about, the whole of this area, as far as the county is concerned, as well as Christchurch. But at this time, we wanted to make sure that the public are fully aware of the possibility of the forming parish councils within our present borough. Because there's a short timeframe on this, everything has had to be condensed. Excuse me, I've got a dreadful cough and cold. And I'll try not to pass it on. Anyway, we had a meeting last week, as I say, to discuss all the implications that have come out from the task and finish group and to discuss going forward to a public consultation. What I want to stress now is everything that goes forward is a matter of consultation. Just because we have some words written down on paper and that will eventually come out to the public, I don't wish, and none of the members of the committee wish, that people within the general public will say, oh, it's just a consultation process, it's already been decided. As you can see, our deputy mayor sat up the head of the table nodding away because she chaired the task and finish group. The really important thing at this point for everybody to understand is it is a consultation to see if various areas want to be parished in any way, shape or form. So we decided that, yes, we agreed with the recommendation that we should go out to consultation, but we need everybody to be well informed on all of the implications, to understand the functions of a PCC, of a, sorry, parish council. And that they should really understand that there would be, if a parish council was formed, an additional preset on top of whatever the amount of council tax was being paid to the main authority. So it's not instead of, it's on top of and would therefore be in addition, if we do join together with Bournemouth and Paul into one authority, we will be paying what we pay at the moment in the way of council tax plus an additional preset. I hope I'm making that clear because we really do want that information to go out to everybody. So I would like to recommend, as on the agenda, that subject to the agreed amendments, which is what I've been talking about set out above, being incorporated, the task and finish group, community governance review draft recommendations are set out in the schedule attached to the report, be approved for public consultation and to all interested parties. The final documentation will be reviewed by the members of the task and finish group prior to publication. I'd like to propose that as set out here, and I do hope I've made clear the point that we were all very concerned about, this isn't a done deal. Thank you.
councillor Fitz.
seconded, vice-chairman. Very sorry to second that.
thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, members of council. I'd like to pick up on one point that has been raised by the chairman of the Community Committee and I would like to stress that this is a genuine consultation. Unfortunately, we've all had, two years ago, a consultation which wasn't and which, I understand, an eminent QC has said the document thereto was undoubtedly biased and I was very pleased to hear that. Can I say though, chairman, that the...
is this relevant, David?
yes, it is. I would hope that as many of the members of the public as possible do respond, bearing in mind that this is, we do genuinely want people to understand what this is about. This is not, as another councillor has said, the borough light. These will be new councils or a new council capable of carrying on traditions, capable of representing, but not trying to do everything that this borough council has done. This is about added value. One point I will say, one of the concerns, and our chief executive raised this two years and more ago, of the future Dorset procedure is a democratic deficit. But a parish council or a town council, as it would be for Christchurch, is a way of addressing this. It's a way of finding that you, the people out there, have councillors who have a mandate, who can go to whichever authority is responsible and say, I am a councillor, I would like you to answer this question. They can help, they can advise, they can be a vital link between the people and the new top-tier authority. So I would urge everybody to make their views known. We want this to be a genuine democratic consultation. I'm not happy with some of the views that have been, with some of the proposals that have been expressed. Tonight is not the time to address those. The time to address those is in the consultation process, but it becomes a valid process the more people respond. So I would say, thank the members of the committee for their work and I was able to assist them in that. Thank the chairman for her introduction and I would finally, once again, say to the public, this is about you. Tell us what you want and we will try to deliver it. That should be the keynote for local government. Let's make it the keynote for this. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
thank you, councillor Jones. Any further speakers? councillor Bunji.
thank you, Mr Mayor. I agree with what councillor Jones has said, this is not the time and place to debate this in detail, but I would urge that if we're going to have public consultation, let's make sure it's very open and easy for the public to obtain. All I've seen so far is that paper copies will be available at the library and the civic offices. I'd like to see that more widespread. There ought to be somewhere in Highcliff that people could obtain paper copies. Not everybody's on the internet and it is, as has already been said, very important that as many people as possible that live in the ancient borough take part in this. The one concern I have is that we are forming five parish councils, two that already exist, plus possibly three more. And my concern is that this could dilute the effectiveness. And the other problem is that we have the need to fill nearly 50 seats for councillors in the various parishes, across the parishes. And that isn't easy to do. We all know at election time how hard it is to get people prepared to stand and co-opting members is always one way of getting someone onto a parish council, but it's not the best way. You need people that are willing and happy and be prepared to do it. I support this going forward for proper consultation, but let's please ensure that everybody has the facility to take part in this. We don't want the situation that we had two years ago when only a small section of people in Christchurch received a document to make comment on. It has to be easy for people to get hold of, either on the internet or in hard copy. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
thank you, councillor. councillor Abbott.
thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you for the excellent information from councillors Wilkes and Jones. I wonder if you might just add to that, before the commentators in the echo get busy, that the members of the parish councils, whatever form, do not get paid. They're voluntary.
councillor Jameson.
thank you, Mr Mayor. And I speak as a former chairman of Burton Parish Council and just raise the obvious point that whilst parish councillors don't get paid, neither do borough councillors. We get an allowance for the work that we do. Mr Mayor, the concern that I have is that the parish councils are constituted in law and if we are going to go through the process of creating new parish councils, I'm assuming that we have to go through Parliament in order to do that. We can't just do it on our own. I seek some clarity on that, but the actual... the things that parish councils can do currently are very limited. So they're not just mini borough councils. They can create a footpath, they can create an allotment, they can have a graveyard and other than that, their powers are limited. So I wonder how we're going to accommodate those in the new regime, because parish council and town council are basically at the same level. And whilst we in Burton and Hearn, when it comes to elections, for example, then that election function is carried out on our behalf by the borough council because we are not empowered to do that. So lots of things that we can't do and if we want to start doing new things, then there has to be some mechanism to allow us to do it. And I just wonder at this point how that is going to be brought into the consultation because along with those functions, there are costs and those costs would be significant and above the costs that we would pay to, as a normal borough preset. It'll be in addition to and quite significant. Thank you.
thank you, councillor Jameson. Any further speakers? You indicated, you spoken? I was talking about to councillor Bunji, councillor Jones. You wish to come back?
thank you. Can I add a point of information, Mr Mayor, which I'm sure councillor Bunji will be interested in? Provided a certain percentage of members are elected, a town council or parish council has a general power of competence, so it can do whatever it is not illegal to do. And that is actually enshrined, I believe, in the Localism Act. But to do that, you need a certain number of elected councillors. So I'm quite sure you're aware of that, councillor Bunji.
Mr Jones, you wish to respond?
thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Jones has summed up the competency issue, that you're right, there is a general power of competency so long as three-quarters of the members are elected and there are other conditions such as training of the clerk and of the staff. Just to answer a couple of other points, the 2007 Local Government Housing, sorry, Local Government and Public Involvement in Health Act 2007 devolved the power to districts and borough councils to establish parish and town councils through the community governance review process. So at the end of the process, after the council has made its final decision, if it decides to establish a town parish council, then this council can do that through an order. And finally, in terms of encouraging and public participation through the surveys, if any members have suggestions as to where we may locate paper copies of the surveys, please let me know and we will ensure that they're supplied to those locations.
thank you, Mr Jones. I'm looking around the room. councillor Durham Wilkes.
thank you, Mr Mayor. I just wanted to make a few points clear because obviously I didn't clarify them sufficiently earlier on. It is not a case that there will be five parish councils, that is a possibility. We had to work out something, some figures and facts to go out to consultation on. And hence, we have wording that went before us at the committee last week and that has come through in the recommendation. But the whole idea is that people should be... But the whole idea is that people should be as well-informed as possible and that they should understand all that is involved in running a parish council, all the facts and all the implications that come from that. And yes, as has been mentioned tonight, parish councillors don't get paid. They do get an allowance for things like mileage, but they don't get an allowance as such just for being a parish council. But everything, as much as possible, needs to go into this document. But it doesn't want to be too long that people don't want to read it. But our role as councillors' members here is to make sure that people know where to get the information from, that we partake fairly with the information we give out. We mustn't go leading the public on any of the issues involved. We must just inform the public. And then it is up to the public to make up their own mind. It is not our role in this instance to be trying to guide the public as to what they should be saying and doing when they fill in this questionnaire. We do, certainly all of the committee wished for it to be as open as possible for people to have the facts and then make their recommendations to us, which we can then look at. And it will be then that we spend our time debating the detail of it and deciding what we go forward on. It's not our position as members to go trying to lead anybody in a direction. We need to make sure they know where to get the information from, they know how to get involved in the whole process, and we need to encourage them to do so. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Wilks. Councillor James.
Mr Mayor, on a point of clarity, as we've been open and transparent in this particular matter, as with all other matters, of course. Could I just ask the publication date of the 25th of May, which is at the bottom in the quarter of this? Is that the publication date that's going to be?
Mr Jones.
Mr Mayor, the date at the bottom is indeed the start of the consultation period. So by the 25th of May, we will start the consultation. That will be the publication date of that document, when it's revised, take any changes that arise from council. And that will run until the 20th of July.
So this is in fact a draft document, but it's not under takeover, so?
It is your draft recommendations, the draft recommendations of the task and finish group coming before, through the community committee onto council.
Make clear, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. There being no further questions, I'll put the minute 3.40 to the vote. Those in favour? Now move to item 12 on the agenda, the updates to the constitution. Councillor Flagg.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Members, this agenda item is to reflect the changes to the corporate team following the retirement of the Head of Property and Engineering Services. Firstly, I'd just like to apologise for line one of item 2.1. Clearly, the constitution is a key statutory document of Christchurch Borough Council. The updates and changes at appendix one are in red, and they reflect the changes of responsibility from the Head of Property and Engineering to the Strategic Director of Finance. No other changes have been made to the document since its last approval by this full council. And I'm happy to propose as set out. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Jameson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm happy to second as set out. Thank you.
Does any member wish to speak on this item? Councillor Bungey.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I have to say, I am very concerned that one officer is being loaded with two officers' work. And on top of that, the officer is in charge of finances for East Dorset district, this borough, both of which he has an obligation to make sure we stay in the black. He's also working on the disaggregation for the new authority, should it happen. He's also working on the finances for the shadow authority. Now, with the best will in the world, I would hate the officer to have a nervous breakdown with work overload. And I think really, before these changes are made, it should go to the scrutiny committee. This isn't just something that is put on the table for members to rubber stamp. This needs to be considered, because there are serious implications. If something goes wrong, then one officer is really got a difficult job to go forward. So I really do think this should go to scrutiny. And if I can get a second, I would so propose that now. Thank you.
Councillor Jones.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I will second that and reserve my rights.
Thank you. Chief Executive.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just to allay any concerns that councillor Bungey has. This isn't a matter of doubling someone's workload. This is about the delegation that officers have to expedite the council's business where that's appropriate. And these decisions are made by you as the members. Obviously, when there's a change in the structure, and in this occasion, we made a senior post redundant, which makes a contribution to balancing the revenue budget for both you and for East Dorset. Then we obviously need to review the delegations. So Mr Cass, the outgoing officer, had a number of delegations. But let's just be clear, he didn't do all the work related to those delegations, because he has a team of people who are qualified to do that. But he holds the responsibility. So the people that reported to Mr Cass now report to Mr Milner. And therefore, the recommendation in front of you is that Mr Milner now has the delegated responsibilities. But clearly, again, he won't be doing all of the work. He'll be contributing to it and giving a leader a strategic level. Some of the descriptions that councillor Bungey gave in terms of Mr Milner's workload aren't quite accurate. Mr Milner's not involved in the disaggregation work, for example, other than taking a very high-level overview. So I'm satisfied, as you're head of paid service and the one who's responsible making sure that the council's as well-resourced as it can be, that the arrangements that we're making are sound. And clearly, Mr Milner is satisfied and happy to take on those responsibilities. That's not to say that scrutiny couldn't have a look at delegations. That would be a matter for you to decide whether you want to do that. But I would encourage you, if scrutiny, if there's a mood to do that, that you agree to the changes to the constitution tonight and then allow scrutiny to do some work on the constitution that then stands. Because if you don't approve the delegations tonight, it will hamper things in terms of the good business of the council. So that would be my strong suggestion to you. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Any further questions? Councillor Jameson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Well, I did indicate earlier on, but thank you for giving me the opportunity. And in light of what the chief executive has said, I'm content to go forward on that basis. But I would expect this to come through to scrutiny so that we can make a judgment on some of the finer details, particularly in the case that the officer in question may be conflicted or may not feel competent. For example, in the engineering policies, construction and maintenance services, including building repairs fund and to manage the construction services. Well, we employ engineers because they have a skill. Finance officers have financial skills. Engineering officers have engineering skills. And whilst I know that everybody works very closely and harmoniously, they have those skills and they're employed for a purpose. And those are the sort of things which I would expect the scrutiny committee to have a look at. Thank you.
I take your point, councillor. Mrs Jones.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I would like to reiterate what councillor Jameson has said. One of the things throughout all this has been that we've been worried over the burdens that we are putting on people. And I accept that, in all good faith, the chief executive says, "People will be reporting to him, but he won't be doing all the work." Well, that surely is what is happening in every department so far, that people report to the one in charge, but they have to do some work before they can give their considered opinion. So I do think we have to take into account, however willing our officers are to go the extra mile, we have to take into account what burden we are placing on them. It seems to me that we have had a reduction in the number of senior officers and we are piling on a few individuals' work. So if they could have done this work in the first place, why did we have the other officers? There is a load, and there is a load that a person can take. But we don't want to be in a position where we, if you like, ask them to go the extra mile that they can't achieve, however willing they are. So I would back this view that scrutiny looks at it very carefully.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, for the opportunity just to speak again. I just reassure members that no one is placing undue responsibility on anyone. You know, Mr Milner and I and the other senior officers have discussed this matter. I don't want to suggest it's routine, but it's entirely normal for us to have delegated responsibilities. It's entirely normal for those delegated responsibilities to be expedited quite quickly, actually. You know, in this case, if there's a technical engineering matter, Mr Milner is not expected to review the technical content of whatever decision is made. He's expected to take a managerial judgment about whether it sounded in like the policy of the council, et cetera. And so it works on that basis. And you know, to be frank, you know, the number of senior officers that you have is less than it used to be. And that's a reflection of the funding regime of central government. And we've had to respond to it. So we need to make this work. It's not about trying to put extra responsibility on people for the sake of it. But your chosen, part of your chosen financial strategy was to reduce the senior management structure over a period of time. And that's what we have done. And there is a consequence to that. I'm not trying to suggest you don't take it for all discreet. That's a matter for you to vote on. But just be mindful, if you're talking about the workload of officers, every time you refer someone to scrutiny, that has an impact.
Councillor Flagg.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I know there's a second proposal on the table. I just wondered if it would help if we amend the recommendation that I made so that if we agree this statement this evening, it then gets forwarded to the scrutiny committee before it gets published on the Dorset For You website. And if need be, come back to this council if there are any issues that scrutiny have.
Mr Mayor, members, I think you do need to make that resolution to empower the officers to actually undertake and exercise those delegations. So I think, whilst, good sentiments, I think if you're going to do it that way, I think you need to have it as an A and a B. A, that you approve the constitutional changes now. And if you then wish to refer that on to scrutiny, that that's a second. A B, to refer it to scrutiny for review and then come back if there are issues to modify at a subsequent council meeting.
Councillor Jones.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Do I understand it, as I understand it at the moment, the proposition as set out, proposed by the leader, is effectively A? And councillor Bungey has proposed, and I have seconded, that we add a new B, that the matter be referred to scrutiny. I'm perfectly prepared to accept as a drafting amendment that we, to agree that we accept the changes for the time being as set out, but then the matter is referred to scrutiny. Am I, do I understand that correctly? Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr Mayor. I now will exercise the rights I reserved as seconding. This actually, in the past, most constitution changes come to scrutiny first. They go to scrutiny, then to resources, and then to full council. I know this is a technical issue, but it is a little disingenuous to say that it's a tidying up, because the more you give a responsibility to somebody, the greater the burden that that man or woman carries. Yes, it might be a purely technical thing. But if something goes wrong down the line and you are responsible, you carry the can. And we are giving a lot more responsibility here to an officer. And I think, having said yes, we will, for the purposes of facilitating the council's business, we'll go along with it. But we do need to be aware that if you're doing your job conscientiously, you are not a rubber stamp. You do not just thump something down and go on. You say, "Yes, okay, I need to check this." Otherwise, what are you there for? Why isn't it signed off somewhere down the line? We have an officer who is actually working really for four authorities, Christchurch and East Dorset, and two soon-to-be shadow, God forbid, but soon possibly to be shadow authorities, Shire Dorset and the South East Dorset Unitary Authority. That's a lot of responsibility. We ought to be looking at this as scrutiny. Scrutiny asks the questions. That's what we're here for. And it's our job normally to look at things before they come forward and say, "Is there anything wrong with this?" And we have spotted in the past, and I'm sure councillor Jameson will agree with me, quite a few possible problems. And because we've looked at it, we've identified them, and they're not problems anymore. Mr Mayor, I could say quite a lot more, but members will be very, very pleased to know I'm not intending to. I think this is self-evident, and I'm very pleased to second councillor Bungey's motion.
Councillor Jameson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I have been named so, twice in fact. But I don't propose to speak twice. Just to say that, you know, our role is to protect the council. And whilst I accept the officers have their competence and their ability to take on extra functions, as has already been alluded to, should something go wrong, it is the council that is at risk. And it's our job to protect the council. So I'm grateful for the discussion, the fact that it will go to scrutiny, where we will carry out our function as we have done in the past. Whether it then comes straight back here or whether it goes through the other committee roles or not is a question for further discussion, I would have thought. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you, councillor.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Can we just have confirmation about what the proposal was? Please, Mr. Mayor.
As I understand it, and I'm sure I'll be corrected if I get it wrong, but it's to leave the recommendation as, as set out in the, in the report, but call that A, and then B would be, and I'm trying to read Richard's writing, that the changes be referred to the scrutiny policy of the committee for review, and if applicable, to make recommendations to a future meeting of council.
I would be happy with that, Mr. Mayor. Yes, thank you. Thank you. Is everybody clear on? Are you happy with that, Colin?
Mr. Mayor, as the proposer.
I'm sorry, how do you call it?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I seconded the original motion, I thought I would probably second councillor Flag's amendment to the motion or the proposal, which I am happy to do. We've had an explanation from the officers. I'm content that the officer who is mentioned in the report is content with his new job partly. I'm very happy anyway to second this as set out.
Thank you. Councillor Bungie, are you, are you happy with the proposal and the amendment?
Well, I'm not happy, because I think, quite frankly, this should have come to scrutiny before it came to this council, not the other way around. We're putting the cart after the horse again, or before the horse, rather. It's happened before, where things have come through changing the constitution. And I can remember a while ago when Sofia Nati was here, something changed in the constitution. And I went to her and asked why it had not come to committee. And she advised me it didn't have to come to committee. They had the power to change things as they wished. Now, that may have been misinformation, I don't know. But it does concern me that this is a major change. And maybe the officer that was made redundant was made redundant prematurely. We know we had a lot of work coming along, engineering work. And if, as we've heard, we have a finance officer in charge who's going to have to ask advice on engineering and building projects, where is that advice going to come from? Are we going to have to go to outside consultants? Or is it, have we got the technical ability in-house? And if we have the technical ability in-house, why can't that officer take on those responsibilities instead of the finance officer? It all seems very muddled to me as the way it's going, that everything's being shoveled onto one person. And it does concern me, as I've said. As it is going to go to scrutiny, I will accept the modification to my original proposal and let it go through. But I do think, time and again, things come to this council as a fait accompli. And I don't think that is correct. Members of the council should make policy and make decisions, not be told this is happening because of. So I take that on board, chairman, Mr. Mayor, donation to your charity. I take it on board and I will accept the modifications as made. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bungie. Councillor James, you've already spoken.
Yes, I have, Mr. Mayor, and I have been named twice. So I have two opportunities, and thank you for that.
Mr. Mayor, can I just give advice? If you're named, members, if you're named in debate, you can respond to the point that you were named on. It doesn't give you another go to speak for five minutes on any subject that, that comes to you.
And, and I'm speaking exactly in that, that way, chief executive. But it's, the, the issue is, it comes to, it comes to scrutiny committee so that we can see, for example, if the officer is going to be conflicted, where you have finance and you have engineering, and there's the opportunity to be conflicted on that. And it was alluded to by the, one of the previous councillors, that that is a, a concern. And I can assure, and I can assure members that we will look at that in scrutiny very closely. Thank you.
There doesn't seem to be any indication for any further speakers, so I shall go to the vote. Those in favour?
Seventeen, Mr. Mayor.
Those against? Any abstentions?
None.
We now move to item 14, as 13's been moved to the end of the meeting, the partnership policy. Councillor Flag.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This agenda item before you this evening, members, is the annual review of pay policy. And just to say that the next statement is scheduled for the 31st of March 2019, and I'm happy to propose as set out. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Jamieson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm happy to second as set out.
Any member wish to speak on this item? Is there any debate? Then we go straight to the vote. Those in favour? That's unanimous. Thank you, members. Item 15, which is the gender pay gap. Councillor Flag again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This report before you this evening is for noting. However, I would just like to point out a typo to members in 33, under the heading Lower Quartile. Of the 140 employees in the Upper Middle Quartile, that should indeed read the Lower Quartile. And just to advise members that the legal requirement for this is the Equality Act 2010, whereby specific duties and public authorities regulations 2017 is applicable. And I'm happy that proposer, that members note the report. Thank you.
Councillor Jamieson.
Once again, happy to second, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions? Any debate? I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour? Those to the contrary? That's carried. We now move to the closed session of the meeting. And I would now ask all the members of the public and inclusive the press. Oh, sorry. David.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members, in view of the nature of the business we transacted, it is likely that if members of the public were present during the following item, there would be disclosure to them of an exempt information, and they'd be therefore excluded from the meeting in accordance with section 100a of the Local Government Act 1972. And I understand that the deputy leader will second the proposal.
Happy to second, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Yes, it does, Charles. Members, can I ask you to vote on that proposal, please?
To exclude.
To exclude. That's carried, yes. Thank you.